To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
I am here.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mr. Cabrera.
I am here. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, the notice departments have been satisfied as to the time, place, and date of holding said meeting by posting notice on the bulletin board here in Borough Hall and by emailing the same to the Herald of Cape May County and the Press of Atlantic City on October 15, 2024. In the event of an emergency, your emergency exit is the door you came in, our front left, your back right, or the door just by the American flag. This being, this meeting is being shown live here today on the Borough's YouTube and Facebook channel. Just want to do a quick sound check. We're good to go, Brian? All right? If you're watching this meeting live and you want to make a public comment, you're going to enter the access code, the dial-in feature, and your, uh, the number is 888-363-4734. And when prompted, you're going to enter the access code 969-9020, followed by the pound or the hashtag. In the event you're watching this, the recorded version of this meeting, and you would like to make a public comment or answer a question, you're more than welcome to email our clerk at clerk@wildwoodcrest.org, or you may phone her at 609-729-8040. Again, if you're watching this meeting live and you make a public comment on the chat feature on either one of the social media channels, they are not being monitored, so you're going to have to make the public comment by making the, uh, the call into the dial-in conference line. Okay, that said, Madam Clerk, I believe we have two ordinances on for today.
Yes, the first is ordinance 1462 regarding peace and good order.
Motion that ordinance number 1462 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It's moved in second that ordinance number 1462 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1462 reads as follows, "An ordinance of the borough of Wildwood Crest repealing Article 1, Public Conduct, Section 48-12 through Section 48-12.4 of Chapter 48, Peace and Good Order."
Motion that a public hearing now be held under ordinance number 1462.
Second.
It's been moved in second that a public hearing under ordinance number 1462 now be held.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
For is open for public comment on ordinance number 1462, peace and good order.
Mr. Cabrera, does, what, how, well, how is it written? Is it words? We're talking about peace and good order? Is that, is that what that is?
Uh, no, I think that's just the short title of the, of the ordinance.
It's basically, it's basically conduct.
It's basically conduct. Okay, it's basically bad language and all the things.
No, Miss Quaid, this, this is, um, when, when the New Jersey State Legislature decriminalized marijuana and passed the cannabis bill, they slipped in a couple other things in there. One of which was they took away the criminal penalties for underage consumption of alcohol in public. They made it just a warning. The other thing they did was repeal the statute that allowed municipalities to prohibit consumption of alcohol on private property. So that's what we're repealing here. It's our ordinance which was based on that state statute which has now been limiting. And the reason is, is because people are looking at our ordinance and saying, hey, why don't you guys enforce this? This is here. So eliminate that confusion. We're just cleaning up the code to make it compatible with the state statutes.
Good, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on the conference line? Public comment, ordinance number 1462. Okay, hearing done.
Motion that a public hearing under ordinance number 1462 now be closed.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the public hearing under ordinance number 1462 now be closed.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1462 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It's been moved in second that ordinance number 1462 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance 1463, and it is a bond ordinance for land acquisition.
Motion that ordinance number 1463 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It's been moved in second that ordinance number 1463 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1463 reads as follows, "A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of lands, 201 West Pittsburgh Avenue, in and by the borough of Wildwood Crest in the county of Cape May, New Jersey, appropriating 775,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 738,000 bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation."
Motion at a public hearing now be held under ordinance number 1463.
Second.
It's been moved in second that public hearing under ordinance number 1463 now be held.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
It's open, public comment, ordinance number 1463. Start with anybody here in the room. We just need your name.
All right, all. David Thompson, 8801 Atlanta County. What is the purpose or for the acquisition? What will we be doing with it?
Uh, so the act, the purchase of this is the, is the lot that's for the house that's just behind the municipal pool. Uh, there is one, uh, one parcel there that creates an odd-shaped lot. So the borough would be acquiring that lot. In addition to that, we'll be selling the one that's on Crocus in New Jersey. So we're gonna sell one and buy one.
All right, so you're not gonna keep the Crocus for the New Jersey Avenue when that gets done for parking?
Yeah, so the plan, uh, the tower design group, their parking schematic, has shown that with the, the current lots that we have on Wisteria Road, just south of the Brandon's Park House, would be sufficient. And when the new, uh, road diet happens on New Jersey Avenue, um, there will be additional parking spaces in addition to what we already have now. And also, we'll clean up the, uh, I guess it'll clearly outline the parking spaces along New Jersey Avenue, because right now people don't pull up to the curb, or they park in the middle of it, and then all the cars can't get in front of it or behind it. So when they have, like, when that parking scheme gets laid out, uh, we will actually gain more parking on New Jersey Avenue with addition of the municipal lot, if in fact it's needed.
All right, so the, the new lot you'll be purchasing is just to square off the property?
Correct.
With no additional plans for down there as of yet?
Nope.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other public comments? Ordinance number 1463. All right, we'll go with anybody on the conference line. Hearing done.
Motion that a public hearing under ordinance number 1463 now be closed.
Second.
It's been moved in second that the public hearing under ordinance number 1463 now be closed.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that ordinance number 1463 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It's been moved in second that ordinance number 1463 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have the resolutions. The first is approving a settlement agreement with a plaintiff in litigation known as Rotimi Owwo Esquire, OBO African American Data and Research Institute, and Baffi Obafemi v. Borough of Wildwood Crest, GRC Complaint Number 2022-197.
Motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing abatement of fee to big-time vending for loss of revenues in the amount of 3,000 resulting from loss of concession areas in 2024 and 2025.
I'll motion it. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing the issuance of not exceeding 12 million bond anticipation notes of the borough of Wildwood Crest in the county of Cape May, New Jersey.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is canceling erroneous 2025 sewer rents in the amount of $124 and refunding payments in the amount of $62.16 for property located at 117 East Syracuse Avenue.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Borough Engineer Work Order for Sunset Lake Park Survey Tasks 1 through 3 at the not-to-exceed sum of 7,500.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing a master license agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for the placement of wireless communication facilities in the public rights of way.
Motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing Resolution Number 25-168 to be rescinded in totality.
Motion. Second.
Did you want to make?
Yes, I'll, actually, I do have a question about that one. That one is for Centennial Park, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I received a quote from Fred Trevone back in, I guess it was May?
I think, no, I'm sorry, June, of something in the upwards of almost $300,000. Is that something that we're gonna be considering for that park alone, or are we doing that for all the parks? For the ballards?
The ballards are for, basically, for the ramming situation that we're considering, but right now, uh, we're looking at Centennial Park because that's probably our main thing, theme. Uh, I know that there are some other situations and issues that we need to discuss. So right now, we're just, we had that on hold.
Would you mind if I put that under old business?
Sure.
Can revisit that?
No, that's good.
When I saw that number, I thought that was extremely high, so hopefully.
Well, there's also grants out there that we haven't really gotten into yet because we're looking at the theme, we're also looking at the situations that we want to try to achieve. Uh, I know that there is, uh, there is grant money out there, we just haven't looked through it all yet. And that would include the other parks, too. We're not just looking at Centennial.
How many total parks are there? Six?
Look. Go ahead.
I was just trying to count. Yeah. I was counting parks.
Six off the top of my head.
Yeah, but it's not, what we're looking at right now is where we bring people to, if I'm correct on that, right, Captain? Like, we're introducing, uh, if we're having, like, the concerts, we're telling people that they're gonna form there, so we have to protect there. Uh, the other parks that are kind of basic, uh, just our parks, I think we'll look at them later on, but right now, we just really want to take care of the ones that we're bringing our citizens to and ask them to form a, uh, form in that area. So we want to protect that, basically, along the bike path.
Yes, anywhere that you're gonna provide Borough functions, Borough events, mass gathering areas, that's something that we really need to look at in terms of how we secure those areas when we have those events. So that's what we've been looking at and have had several discussions on through the years.
Right, I don't disagree with that. I, I was just curious because of the price that I received. I thought that was pretty high, so hopefully he could sharpen his pencils and figure it out, you know, a little lower, so.
See, the problem now is that we just can't put up ballards. They have to be the ram-proof ones that are a little bit more expensive. I think that also included, if I, I may be wrong on this, but we were looking at those boulders that we were gonna put in there to kind of, like, landscape it a little bit. I, I'm not sure. I forget. I think it's just the ballards, though.
So, so, safe to assume, let's just make sure we're on the same page. The park as it exists right now today, staying this way for 2025, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have planned, uh, in our capital budget for this year, some upgrades to that park. Um, I think that, I think that we all had some concerns with respect to industrializing the look of a beautiful park, Centennial Park. So I think that what our thought was, was if we do it with some natural landscaping and look at the design, because there are some lighting fixtures and the stage of Centennial Park needs some help as well, is to do an upgrade to that park altogether, obviously, so that it meets the criteria that police department's looking for, but also not to lose the natural beauty of our park. So I think that was kind of to summarize where we are. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that. This project would not be something until, until, it probably would be somewhere in the spring of 2026 to get done, so it would happen in time for the summer of 2026.
And I don't know if the REC has weighed in. I think they should probably be hands-on if they haven't been. If they want to, I don't know, because they have, they run all the events there, so I think they should be involved if they want to.
Yeah.
So I would suggest putting this under.
It's under old. Yep.
Okay. Are we good?
Good.
Okay, next is authorizing comply, oh, I think I need to get a roll call. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing compliance with the annual audit requirements and directing members of the governing body to execute the group affidavit in accordance therewith.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is canceling erroneous 2025 sewer rents in the amount of $124 for property located at 103-105 West Astor Road.
I'll motion it. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing refund for peer playmates camp fee for $500 for 2025.
Motion. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing an increase in the bid threshold pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-3C.
Motion it. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
We are pulling the next one. We are going to, the next is authorizing contracts with certain approved state and national contract vendors for calendar year 2025.
I'll motion it. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly, is approving a fourth round Affordable Housing Trust Fund Spending Plan and requesting program and court approval of the spending plan.
I'll motion it. I will second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Motion that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. Roll call, Mr. Schiff.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Thanks, Trish.
Sure.
Okay, uh, nothing listed under correspondence, uh, brings us to, uh, new business. Um, I had asked Trish to put, um, I Bank 1, I Bank Phase 1, I Bank Phase 2, uh, on the agenda, just to, just to talk it through for a second. I Bank Phase 1 is, uh, we have, uh, already awarded the contract. There is some additional work that I had met with Francine and Mark onsite individually to walk through. So there, um, if you're familiar with, say, from the, where the kayak launch is, where Bayview Drive, uh, all the way down to the public works, um, there's a couple streets before you get to Syracuse that are in bad shape, uh, in terms of the roadway conditions. Now, there's no sanitary sewer mains in there, but the roadway and the curbing and the sidewalk is in bad shape. Uh, earlier in the, on the agenda, we approved, uh, some survey work and some work Mark's office is going to do. There is a parcel along Bayview Drive that the borough owns, um, that probably needs to be better utilized. It's just not in good shape. Um, there's, I think, I think some of those new houses that are being built there are storing some materials which they've been asked to move, uh, off of the borough property. Um, so we would clean up that street, but also make some, some improvements to the lot that belongs to the borough in that area. So I just want to make sure that, um, everybody was fully up to speed in terms of what I Bank 1 is, but the additional work that I just spoke to would be a change order to that job. Any questions?
Not for me.
I'm good, thank you.
And Mayor, we're gonna be providing a proposal within the next day or two for that work with an estimate for your consideration.
Okay, okay.
What's the time on that? Pretty figure.
Well, the, the overall I Bank 1 contract is gonna start in September and will be done before next season. So, say, June, you know, late May, early June next year.
Thanks.
Okay, I Bank Phase 2, uh, so the paperwork for that, uh, just, just to go back to I Bank Phase 1 for a second, the borough will receive $2 million for grants towards that project. Um, so that's good news. I Bank Phase 2, Mark has to start the paperwork so that we can hopefully be awarded, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, 4 million, is it up to 4 million? 3, 3, 3 million?
So Phase 1 was 2 million, and Principal for goodness sake eligible for 3 million for this next round.
Okay, so that paperwork would have to start. Now, we had loosely kicked around Park Boulevard from Cressy down to Jefferson Avenue as our next I Bank program, and the reason for that is because we're, we're in the first stage of the bulkhead valve raising of the streets project, but Park Boulevard itself also has some traffic safety issues, but roadway concerns and sanitary sewer issues, so that would be the next likely transition into a next I Bank project. So we want to give Mark the go-ahead to start filing that paperwork, and I guess, I guess we would need the resolution at some point, but I just want to make sure everyone understood that I Bank Phase 2 needs to start now for next year.
Thank you. Our next meeting is the 30th of the month.
Okay, so that, so what I'm saying is, is I Bank Phase 2 would be Park Boulevard, if everybody's agreeable to that.
Did those applications just open up, though?
Yeah, as soon as we got past June 30th, all the carnage was.
Yes.
So it opened up the next round. So what'll end up happening is steps 1 through 3 for this, uh, we call it I Bank 2, we'll be able to navigate that pretty quickly, probably in 1 to 2 months, and then the project will get ranked, and that's when they're gonna come back to and say, we'll start designing. So you just need to be ready for that if we're gonna go all the way down the field.
Okay, all right. Are we good with I Bank Phase 2?
Yep.
All right. All right, brings us to old business, uh, first up, the box truck ordinance, so last time we talked about this, so we're waiting.
Mr. Mayor, we still have brush maintenance, that's under discussion. Is that not on yours?
No.
It was a proposed ordinance from, uh, brush maintenance, Rod? Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, it's very basic. Um, our authority is sort of skewed throughout the code on how to handle, um, brush grass, weeds, debris on private property. Uh, so this greatly simplifies it, makes it clear, makes the authority clear and what the ramifications are, uh, for properties that are under these conditions. So what it does, it takes our existing section, which addresses, uh, grass, brush, and weeds, um, and adds a Article 3 to that, which encapsulates all of the authority and, um, regulations pertaining to that area. Uh, so it's just gonna really simplify things and clear it up very much. So, uh, I'm certainly recommending this, uh, to the commissioners for, for adoption.
So that gives, just to make sure, if I follow the emails, basically gives the borough Code Enforcement Department, the borough itself, the ability to get its money back in terms of for the time spent improving a property on the owner's behalf because it's not up to our code.
That's correct. The, the authority exists within Title 40, the state statutes. Uh, this clarifies that the borough can go on to the property, clean the property, and then lean the property, uh, if the invoice is not paid, and there's a process in there, uh, that the, you know, just, you can't charge any amount, it has to be approved by, by the commissioners, and then it can be kind of lean on the property.
I think it's a new-brainer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
You good?
Yes.
Can we?
Intro for July 30th.
Yep. 30th, yeah. 30th.
July 30th. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, all right, uh, box truck ordinance, so I was, what I was saying, so we had talked about this. I know police department are waiting for them to weigh in on the ordinance so that we can get that also introduced. Uh, we did receive, uh, some correspondence, uh, on the, on the box truck that is, uh, on New Jersey Avenue being used as a storage area, um, it has the orange cones around it. Um, so I know that that, um, has been an ongoing issue, so I guess when we're waiting for the comments, if there's anything that we can do to get that, get that moving, um, 'cause I know as we, as the New Jersey Avenue project, um, as that road gets skinnier and there becomes more traffic on that street because of the business district, uh, we way wanna, you know, get that going sooner than later. Questions, issues, comments? All right. All right, 250th Birthday Committee, still looking for volunteers. If you're interested in helping the borough put together some, uh, event planning for next year as the country celebrates its 250th birthday, please send an email to, uh, Trish. Uh, Municipal App is on hold. Uh, Historical Museum is on hold, although I do have a potential volunteer, uh, or somebody that would be interested in going through all the historical artifacts down there and start working on cataloging and cleaning up and just, you know, inventorying all the things that we have, uh, 'cause we have things stored there, but into other areas as well. So trying to get everything preserved and stored into, uh, one location, and then we can determine where we could put these items on display. Uh, traffic calming, I believe we have a, we have a grant out there that's where we're waiting to hear from. We approved at the last meeting, so more news to come on that. to hear from, we approved at the last meeting, so more news to come on that. Back beach excavation is, is, the, the emergency areas have, have been hit and are holding up well. Just, the water that we've had on our beaches have been clearing up. Now, as of last night's storm, I noticed that there is some more out there. There was a meeting with our environmental consultant and with our engineer, Mark, that talks about how we want to build up the low-lying areas over the winter time, so we're going to, we're, we're getting that plan in place now so that we can naturally build up the low-lying areas with sand, remove the snow fence and/or the, the posts, and then take that sand and, and help fill out those areas, because that'll be a lot cheaper than a couple million dollars project to activate the entire beach. So that, more to come on that. Dredging? Mr. Franco?
We actually did hear something from the DOT, surprisingly, I'm not sure why, but we did, and they did make an offer to acquire a parcel of land. We're still waiting to hear back if, if the person that is selling accepted the offer. As of right now, he has not, but it's still on the table, so there was a little bit of an update on that, but we're still waiting, unfortunately.
Washington Seaview Beachfall Outfalls and Capacity, so just to bring everybody up to speed, so the Borough has two FEMA applications in, one for the west side of, of the Borough, where we're, we're actually putting in the new bulkheads and the, and the new pipes after the summer for some additional roadwork, piping, and potentially pump stations. And then the issue with the six outflow lines on our beach, to increase the capacity and eventually get to a pump station so that when the stormwater rises, it will kick on the pump and send the, send it through the six outflow lines, it would send it into one, consolidate it to one pipe, and then send it out to the ocean. We receive, there are two separate grants, we received some good news yesterday, although we don't, won't, won't believe it until it happens, that the total war potentially to the Borough could be anywhere from 21 to 22 million, if I remember correctly. 24 million, 24 million. So, 26 million, 26?
29.
39.
29 million. I, I, well, it's changed.
Francine, what's the number? I feel like it's an option.
I don't know. Well, the projects in themselves will total 29.
Yeah, there's a match.
There's a 25% match, so probably if you're talking about what we're going to get out of it, it's probably in the 22.
Yeah, so the net effect, so we have a contribution that we have to make, and then, but to invest nine and get 20 or 21, I think it's, and it's all going to be on flood mitigation type projects, so I think it's good news. So, fingers crossed, there's a you from the Army Corps and the state and everybody watching, counting on it, we're hoping to get it done. All right. U.S. Army Corps and the DEP do, there is a virtual meeting scheduled for July the 31st, and we're just waiting to, you know, for that meeting to see where, where all of this lies. Have not heard anything in terms of, you know, position or status and so forth, so we'll just talk through and, and get, bring everybody up to speed after that meeting. Borough Hall renovations, there was, again, there was initial walkthrough with our various department heads and our architect to get the needs of the building understood, and then they will begin to start coming up with concept designs and having some, some additional meetings.
Can I get the, the notes on that? If someone took them, I, I don't know if anybody took any notes for that or minutes for that meeting that was discussed?
Sure.
I'm just curious, because I, I don't know how much that's going to cost, I want to stay on top of that one.
It's going to be a lot.
That's why I want to keep on the top of it.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Francine.
Yeah, I think probably Jerry from the architect probably has, has his takeaway notes on that, we can get to him.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. That wraps any old business. Commissioners Franco and Schiff, do you guys have anything you want to add for any of the items under discussion?
I do, I just want to point out something that the, we, the DCA, the LEAP grant for our shared service with Stone Harbor with the Construction Department actually issued us $125,000 this past Monday, and that's largely due to Francine's hard work and the construction office. So, with that money this year, $125,000 will offset some costs, some salaries, update the programs, possibly a new truck, and savings of the taxpayers for here and Stone Harbor, which is excellent. So, congratulations Francine and the Construction Department, so that's my, my comments on that. $125,000 for this year.
Great. Good news. Good job. Commissioner?
I'm good right now, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Anything I have is, first of all, I hope everybody had a great July 4th, the weather was absolutely beautiful, the beaches were packed. I actually got a chance to spend some more time down on, down on there and get a chance to watch the operation of, of everybody. Beach Patrol did a great job, Public Works, the beach was impeccable, the, the porta-potties, the twice, the two-day-a-week service was great, the, the additional pickups for the trashing recycling was very well received, and I kind of go down on the beach in Cognito, so I don't have to talk about Borough business all the time, but I actually, I've been hearing the, the vacationers and the residents, they, they had nothing but great things to say. So, kudos to everybody involved in this municipality for a great July 4th weekend. Go ahead.
I think we missed public comments.
I will come back to that one.
Okay, so, under the commissioner comments, I, that's why I didn't have anything to say there, I agree with you 100%, I think all our departments did a great job. The amount of time and the amount of people that were here were just phenomenal. I mean, it was, I believe, the biggest Fourth of July weekend that we ever had, but it's good to see our departments out there, working well, and, is that you?
That's my stomach.
I thought it was your face, Mike. Anyhow, and I wanted to comment on the Beach Patrol, we won the county race, congratulations to the Wildwood Crest, Beach Patrol for putting a lot of time in, the building is functioning phenomenally, so I'm proud of all the stuff that's happening, and thank you to all.
Okay. All right. Now we'll open up to anyone for a public comment before we head into closed session.
Hi, my name is Joe Disguardo. I just wanted to ask a question, it sounds like, are they going to eliminate some of the outfall pipes? And I know it's a complicated thing, so if it's too complicated to answer now, but it sounded like in that Washington thing, are they going to eliminate, because you said combining pipes?
There's, so right now, there's six outfall lines, the idea would be to get to one outfall line with a pump station to push the water. Similar to what Wildwood has, but maybe a better design.
Okay. Do, do they know right now where that, that one might be?
So we have to, we have to identify Borough property to put the pump station on, so we have lots of ocean for property, we don't, we haven't gotten that level of detail yet, but as soon as, if we get the good news that we're expecting, then we're going to start, you know, fast-tracking.
Okay. That actually would be good, because I know that, I think you had mentioned that, Mark, that some of the other towns had eliminated a good bit of the outfall pipes, so that would be great to, to knock it out, to, it would be a saving feature. And then I wanted to report a positive result of resident suggestions. Residents come here and all the time make suggestions, and sometimes we forget when they're actually taken care of. And some of the decisions that you make, either to finance or otherwise, have long-term effects. Well, this weekend, or the past couple weekends, I noticed when my grandson was digging on the beach, he didn't find any cigarette butts. I was here, it was probably five or six years ago, when the state had made that decision and it went up to the Borough, and it actually was descending, there were, it was going back and forth as to whether we were going to follow that or have decisions, and it was just by coincidence, since she enjoys here, and I know she was one of the deciding factors that chose to eliminate it completely. Well, I think the lasting effect, and that one gentleman that used to sit over there has since passed away, but the legacy of the decisions you guys make and residents' deaths lasts forever. So, I'm glad to see, like you said, the beaches are cleaner, and I really don't have any issue with smoke, whatever people want to do is their own thing. It just was, it was an environmental issue on the beach, it was just dirty, little kids would be digging and they'd get a handful of butts. So, that is lasting effect, and the positive changes that can be made by suggestions of, of residents, financial or otherwise, and then you guys actually implementing the suggestion. So thanks a lot. And we may not even notice the change, because these things happen so gradual, but it just, as Luca was digging on the ground, I'm like, you know what? He's not finding any, he's not like finding a handful of, so thanks a lot for at least listening to your suggestions, and I say sometimes they're difficult.
We have a group down there every Sunday that walks the beaches, it's all blue, they pick up a lot of that stuff, you probably don't even notice that either, but they're down there, they collect a lot of trash, a lot of plastics, and recycle. Do you find any money?
No money, but actually, yes, I mean, just lost a very expensive, bad price.
Thanks, Joe.
David Thompson, again. I'd like to circle back to that, that land acquisition, after listening to the meeting with $300,000 for the ballards and the park, which I think is crucial that you get that and do that, we know that. But maybe $9 million for the outfall pipes, the, the work you're going to do down at Seaview, you mentioned, and up here on New Jersey Avenue, it's a lot of money, especially considering what you're going to add to that, the outfall, like I said, the $9 million. I think spending $800,000 on a property that we really don't have an immediate need or use for, I don't, with this pretty big property down there now, the pool property, and I know it'd be great to square it off, but we didn't try to do that when it was $200,000. Now, property values are through the roof, it's $800,000, and I think with all the other money you have to spend, you just mentioned today, there could be better use for that $800,000 than squaring off that property, that unless you have a specific use in mind for that, like I said, it's a pretty big property now, I think you could better use that $800,000 elsewhere.
So, we're meant, you, you heard me say about selling the one, Rod, on Crocus?
Correct.
Right, so that one would be sold, and then the acquisition would be made on the one there, so it's, it's like a flip.
Offset.
I understand you're going to flip that off, okay? But that, if you were still intent on selling that, you could sell that and use that money towards these other projects as well. I know we purchased those lots, the two lots, for the parking. I would personally rather see you hold on to that lot and see how the redevelopment goes there. Once New Jersey Avenue is done, that could become a, a very vital, thriving destination area that we had talked about, that could very well come, it's going to take a few years, no doubt, okay? So that parking lot could come into play later, or you could sell that lot if you really believe you don't want it or need it. I know we didn't pay anywhere that kind of money for it, so there's profit there, which is why we bought it, knowing we could do that. However, that money, if you decide to sell it anyway, that money could offset some of the $9 million and other money you're going to have to spend. I still think we're just going to buy a lot that's going to sit there and square it off. Granted, the property may be available now, but a lot of money to just square off a lot, that we don't have an intent, and it's already a big property, you've got plenty of ground behind that building on both sides. I would just ask you to reconsider if it's worth spending that much money on that property.
So there's, there's lots behind the Borough, and even with the acquisition of this one, can be sold and buildable lots, right? So, yeah, there is an investment now, but there are two, two or three, maybe four, buildable lots now in that area. So the Borough is basically preserving the open space, but also investing in the opportunity, if necessary, to sell those additional lots in the future. So, you can't do that with the lot on Crocus Avenue, but you can do it with the one down on, on the Borough. In addition to that, if whoever in the future wants to do an expansion to that pool or create another recreational areas, they have the space now to do that. So that was the decision on it, and it's an even swap in term, pretty much an even swap with the money. In fact, the Borough may come out on the positive side after we sell the lot on Crocus.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand that as far as the selling properties of that, but I just, if you're going to sell the lots anyway, you're, you're buying this lot at the top of the market. You know the real estate market right now, okay?